Surely. The beeping is closing down, but why don't we get started? Okay. Good morning and welcome to the January 10th meeting of the New Jersey Transportation Planning Authority Board of Trustees. I hope everyone was able to join us using the go-to meeting instructions that were provided. Just a note, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on our website. Some ground rules for this meeting. Please mute your device when you are not speaking so we can reduce background noise. When you make a motion or comment, please state your name so that we know who you are. For those of you logged into the website or app, please use the checkbox to indicate when you'd like to comment or ask a question so that we can minimize the amount of people talking over each other. Ted will be monitoring the checkbox chat box and will call on people in the order that requests come in. After that, we will ask for any comments from those of you joining us by phone only. Are there any questions about that? Okay. Now to start the meeting, I'll ask Beverly Morris to read the Open Publics Meeting Act. Good morning, Beverly.
Good morning, Commissioner. This is to advise that in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, P L nineteen seventy-five, adequate notice of this meeting has been forwarded to the Newark Star Ledger, the Asbury Park Press, the Courier-News, the Daily Record, the Home News Tribune, the Jersey Journal, and the New Jersey Herald.
Thank you, Beverly. Will you please do the roll call?
Bergen?
Peter Botzolos, present.
Essex?
David Antonio, present.
Hudson?
Ivan Nicholas, present.
Huntington?
Susan Soloway, president, present.
Jersey City? Little Sex?
Charlie Kenny, present.
Monmouth?
Terry O'Connor, present.
Morris?
Kathy De Filippo, present.
Newark?
Philip Scott, present.
Ocean?
Jack Kelly and John Ernst, present.
Passaic?
John Bartlett, present.
Somerset?
Here.
Sussex?
Chris Carney, present.
Union?
Betty Jane Kowalski, Union County.
Warren?
Jason Sernowski here.
Governor's Office?
Jeff Nielsen, present.
N J D O T?
Mike Russo, present.
New Jersey Transit?
Jeremy Colangelo, present.
Port Authority?
Jay Sheffield, here.
Citizens Representative?
Is present.
I'm sorry, was that Jared?
Yeah, Jared Rodriguez, present.
Thank you. All right, we have nineteen voting members present and a quorum. Commissioner De Filippo, are you muted? Commissioner De Filippo, we can't hear you.
Perhaps somebody can text the commissioner.
She can hear us, I can see her trying to unmute.
I did just text her as well. Perhaps we just give her a moment, looks like perhaps she's logging logged out and reconnecting.
Hi, this is Kathy De Filippo again. I am sorry, I lost the sound. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Yes, we can. Okay, and I apologize, I had to go go down and bring it back up. Where are we in the meeting?
Approval of minutes.
Okay, great. So there are there any corrections, additions, or dilutions to the minutes of November eighth board meeting? Seeing none, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
Ocean County, make the vote to approve the minutes.
Thank you, and do I have a second? Monmouth will second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Huntington County has to abstain.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll run in a minute. And let him know that he should reach out.
Okay, so at this portion, I believe the minutes are approved and we'll move on to my remarks. And again, I apologize for what had happened. Just went blank. In any event, once again, I want to thank you all for coming to our annual meeting today. I also want to thank Pamela Frank, the CEO of Charge E B C, the Electric Vehicle Coalition of New Jersey, joining us. I look forward to her presentation on the expanding use of electric vehicles in the N J T P A region and the rest of the state. I'd also like to welcome Huntington County Commissioner Susan Soloway, who will be representing the county on the board. Commissioner Matt Hol, who has previously served as Chair of this board, will be serving as the alternate. We also have a new alternate representing Passaic County, Commissioner Pat Lepore. I look forward to having all of you join us, and I hope I pronounced your names correctly. Today marks the end of my two-year term as the N J T P A Chair. And what an unusual two years it has been. After my election in January of twenty twenty, I led only one, one full meeting in person at the N J T P A office before the pandemic turned pandemic turned all of our lives upside down. I often joke that I never got to use my I D to get get into the building by just waving it. And here we are at the end of that term. But of course, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one presented us with many challenges, and the N J T P office rose to meet them. I'm proud of everything we were able to accomplish during my time as Chair. We shifted to virtual meeting operations for the N J T P A staff and conducted all of our board and committee meetings virtually. We also conducted extensive virtual public outreach for a range of projects and initiatives. And even though we couldn't be together physically, the N J T P A's work was completed on time and as planned. This included several major projects, particularly the completion of Plan Twenty Fifty, the Transportation Improvement Program, and the air quality conformatory determination for both documents. We also learned how important virtual public outreach is for accessibility. By removing location barriers, we saw more people participating in our projects and programs. Going forward, we now know it will be essential to have a hybrid approach so we can include as many people as possible in our work. Now I'd like to take a moment to thank my fellow board members and the N J T P A staff for all your accomplishments during this very difficult time. We quickly, or you quickly converted us to remote work, and we learned a lot about what we're capable of doing along the way. I personally can thank the staff for consistently being in touch with me, keeping me up to date, and the trial and tribulations of getting past the first couple of weeks of being remote. And now I think things are up in the air again, you were back to the office, then you were asked not to come back to the office, and I'm not sure where any of you are today. It gets confusing. But I can't thank you enough for all the work that the staff has done. The N J T P A has continued to play a key role in planning our transportation system, funding projects, and serving as a forum for regional discussions about critical transportation issues. This role is now even more important with the passage of the Federal Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. This legislation introduces new programs and will bring billions in funding for critical projects in our region. This bill will provide additional funding for many existing programs, including the Highway Safety Program, congestion mitigation, and air quality, and transportation alternatives. There are two new formula programs aimed at addressing climate change, and eleven new discretionary grant programs ranging from freight and bridge investments to vehicle charging and alternative fuels, pedestrian safety, green infrastructure, and active transportation. Overall, it's great to see that the priorities of the N J T P A's Plan Twenty Fifty align so well with this new infrastructure bill. As we learn more, I look forward to rolling up my sleeves and working with all of you to expand our existing programs and implement new ones. I'm very pleased that my time as Chair is ending with a strong bipartisan federal infrastructure bill in place. One of the things that I've appreciated most about this board is despite our nation's often hyper partisan climate, we work in a truly bipartisan way, or even nonpartisan way. Politics really drives decisions, and I say rarely, R A R E L Y. We understand that the improvements go beyond our own vacuards, and anywhere in the region, if they aren't in our home counties or cities, actually benefit all of us. Now, my time as Chair is ending, and you may have heard, twenty twenty-two will be my last year as a county commissioner. I'm pleased to let the board know that I will be continuing to represent Morris County for twenty twenty-two here on the board, and I have to say thank you, I've really enjoyed my time. I learned so much in the early years on the board, and I really enjoyed being the Chair during a difficult time. And again, I want to thank the staff for all that you've done. Let's see. In the months and years to come, I look forward to seeing the Morris Canal Greenway Project advance. Tying together these small segments in my own hometown of Roxbury with other trails across six counties will create a trail network to be enjoyed by residents and tourists alike. It will provide enjoyable recreation and help boost the local economy while providing critical transportation links for people who want to walk and bike between communities. I also look forward to the continued success of the Streets Smart New Jersey Pedestrian Safety Program. We hit a major milestone during my tenure as Chair, surpassing two hundred partner communities. And we need this campaign more than ever, as we have partially seen, there's been a spike in pedestrian and cyclist fatalities this year. Increased enforcement and education, coupled with infrastructure improvements through programs like a local safety program, can help us get back on track with reducing fatal crashes. Our ultimate goal is zero traffic deaths. And I want to thank all of you again, you've done especially during this challenging time. I look forward to continuing to serve on the board and to carrying on the great work that we have been doing. While the new infrastructure bill means more funding for our region, we still have much more work to do to advance critical projects, including the new Hudson Tunnel and other aspects of the Gateway Program. Although the tunnel has received federal approval for construction, the project still needs a higher financial rating from the Federal Transit Administration before it can receive federal funds. The tunnel, along with the Portal Bridge Project, which we'll be voting on and funding for later in this meeting, represent major programs on dramatically improving trans-Hudson transit. As you know, these projects are a top priority for the N J T P A, and it's outlined in Plan Twenty Fifty. As representatives of counties and cities, we must push for projects that are important to our constituents, but it's also critical that we continue to focus on the major regional issues we need to address collectively. That concludes my report. Thank you again. And with that, I'll ask if the N J T P, I'm sorry, the N J D O two has D O T has anything they'd like to say this morning?
Good morning, Chairperson. No, thank you, I don't have any comments to offer.
Okay, thank you. N J Transit, do you have any remarks this morning?
Good morning. Just appreciation for all the ongoing work, as you referenced, moving forward on Gateway, and look forward to continuing that in the future. Thanks very much.
Thank you. With that, Mary, would you like to present your executive directors' report to the board?
Yes, thank you. Good morning, everyone, and Happy New Year. Before I give my report, I'd like to take a moment to express my sincere thanks to Commissioner De Filippo for her two years as Chair. Her inspired leadership has guided us through these difficult times and has enabled us to fulfill all our federal requirements while also building our organizational effectiveness and our ability to continue to grow as an agency. We'll have more to say about Chair De Filippo later in the meeting, but for now, let me just say thank you for all you've done and for your outstanding service to the people of the region. I am pleased you'll be with us on the N J T P A board for one more year. While we had hoped that the pandemic would be behind us now, that is not the case, but as the Chair said, we've all demonstrated that we can continue our vital work despite our challenges, and we will draw on the lessons we've learned over the past two years going forward. Although N J T P A staff returned to the office full-time on November twenty-ninth, we continued to coordinate with the Governor's Authorities Unit and N J I T, who's our host agency, on remote and hybrid work as needed. Until further notice, board and committee meetings will continue in virtual format, which I trust you'll agree has worked well. On a very positive note, I want to share that the American Planning Association New Jersey Chapter has selected us for an Outstanding Community Engagement Award for the N J T P A's On Air, our multimedia youth contest. This activity was part of our specialized outreach with the Voorhees Transportation Center to gather input for Plan Twenty Fifty from traditionally underrepresented populations. More than one hundred fifty children and teens shared their visions for the future of transportation in our region. I also want to recognize Amy Jefferson, a principal planner in our local project development group, who received from the same organization the emergency, the emergency, the Emerging Planner Award, and I'd like to congratulate Amy for that. Moving on to activities since our last board meeting, staff has finalized a draft of the Unified Planning Work Program for U P W P, which guides the transportation planning activities of the N J T P A, its member agencies, and the Transportation Management Association. It will go into effect on July one of this year. The document was posted to the N J T P A website in December, and presentations were made at the last round of committee meetings, including highlights of some new initiatives for the coming year. The final draft will be presented to the committees in February and to the full board for adoption in March. We are asking that any comments on the document be submitted by this Friday, January fourteenth. Many activities in the upcoming U P W P are, of course, oriented towards implementing Plan Twenty Fifty, which this board approved back in September. That includes developing an active transportation plan, supporting new studies and local projects in the subregions, and using performance-based planning to help achieve greater sustainability, resilience, and equity. Much of the work program also creates a foundation for taking advantage of the new federal legislation, which, as the Chair noted, provides many opportunities for improving regional infrastructure, including construction of the long-sought new Trans Hudson Rail tunnels. The legislation also calls on M P Os to take an active role in coordinating many new funding and grant programs, including those involving climate change, safety, and freight. At the December third meeting of the Metropolitan Area Planning or MAP Forum, which includes representatives from M P Os throughout New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Connecticut, we heard a detailed briefing on the new federal legislation from Eric Zimmerman of the National Association of Regional Councils, or N R C. Links to, excuse me, links to N R C's summary of the bill and other resources were distributed to board and R T A members following the December joint committee meeting. As the legislation is rolled out and rules to be implemented are issued, we will keep the board informed of any developments. And speaking of federal funding, I'm happy to report that a project we're involved in was selected as a finalist for the federally funded one billion dollar Build Back Better Regional Challenge. The U S Economic Development Administration has awarded five hundred thousand dollars to a coalition consisting of the City of Newark, N J I T, the City of Elizabeth, the Port Authority, the New Jersey Economic Development Authority, Rutgers University, and the N J T P A to further develop a proposal for a Greater Newark Smart Port Regional Growth Cluster. The focus will be on creating jobs and development around port facilities in Newark and Elizabeth. In March, the coalition will submit its proposal to compete for up to one hundred million dollars in funding. The N J T P A is also busy with its own competitive programs. Next month is the deadline for municipalities to submit applications for the third round of the Complete Streets Technical Assistance Grants, which is conducted with support from Sustainable Jersey and the Voorhees Transportation Center at Rutgers. In addition, we've opened our solicitation for a new round of funding for local safety and high-risk rural roads projects. Those proposals are due, they're due on March fifteenth. Please see our website for more details. We are also finalizing a recommended set of new projects to submit to the board for our local concept development program. Expect to see that on the agenda for the February committee and March board meetings. As always, you can consult the central staff highlights distributed for today's meeting for a fuller rundown on recent activities and programs. And before closing, I'm pleased to announce that the final version of Plan Twenty Fifty and the executive summary have been completed, and that, and they feature a colorful layout and photos from all around the region. Hard copies have been mailed out to the board and subregional staff, but you can also view a flip book on our website. And that concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Next, we're going to have a presentation, growing the electric vehicle market in New Jersey. Today, we have with us Pamela Frank. She is CEO of Charge E B C, New Jersey. Pamela has more than twenty years of experience working on sustainability issues and renewable energy. She has served as a key stakeholder in the development of the solar energy market in New Jersey. Since two thousand and four, Pamela has served on the state's Renewable Energy Task Force, and she has worked closely with the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities, Legislative Leadership, and the Governor's Office for the passage of the Solar Advancement and Air Competition Act of twenty ten, including building a diverse coalition of non-industry stakeholders to advance advocacy. And with that, let's welcome Pamela Frank. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, and really good to be with you today on a freezing January Monday. We're gonna just give a pretty brief overview of what the electric vehicle market looks like, lots of really interesting opportunities emerging, and I understand that there may be the opportunity for some questions. I am happy, my style presenting is if you want to interrupt me to ask questions, feel free to do so. I'll, I'll leave that to the prerogative of the Chair. So here we are in two thousand and twenty-one, you can skip to the next slide. So first, let me give you a brief introduction of who I am and where I work. The second slide, please, which is, I work at an energy consulting practice called Gable Associates. And Gable Associates is an energy consulting practice, and we've got some areas of specialty that I've outlined here. I understand the slides will be made available afterwards, so I'm not going to spend time reading through them. But we've been around for twenty-five years, we're headquartered in New Jersey, but we do work all over the country. And in two thousand and fifteen, a bunch of us who had been very involved in the solar industry and getting that up and running in New Jersey and a few other states, really, really wanted to take a crack at the electric vehicle market. And in two thousand and fifteen, there were a few things that happened that made us want to consider doing that. And long story short, we kind of surveyed the field, took a year or so to talk to an awful lot of people, and then we did what I love to do, which is just copy really good ideas. There was a group out in Portland, Oregon, and their approach to helping jumpstart an electric vehicle market was working through a not-for-profit business association. I am an old community organizer at heart, and so I really understood if you want to move minds and hearts, and more importantly, create new laws and new regulations to start markets, it's best done when you have a chorus of interested stakeholders that come from different perspectives, and you can all present something substantiated by good data and analysis to our elected officials. And so with that, we ran with that idea, and we formed an entity called Charge E B C. Charge E B C, New Jersey, is a not-for-profit business association, and it is managed by Gable Associates. So there's a number of other things I do in the firm, I probably spend about fifty percent of my time focused on electrification of transportation. Gable itself has a number of clients that focus on this as well, so that's kind of the linkage there. So you can move to the next slide, please. And, and I'll give you, I don't And, and I'll give you, I don't think I have to spend time with this crowd, talking about why we care about electric vehicles. We've got a number of reasons to care about them, which is really the glue that binds a, a not-for-profit business association together between environmentalists and the New Jersey car dealership and OEMs and consumer advocates. We all find ourselves agreeing on why we should be advancing this market as quickly as possible, for some obvious reasons. So now, what has happened since 2016? Interestingly enough, when the organization first appeared on the scene, there was very, very, very little that New Jersey had to offer in the EV car market. We basically had one incentive, and that was if you purchased an electric vehicle, you didn't pay sales tax. That incentive still is in the market today, but that was the only thing New Jersey had going. That, and it had signed up in 2006 per law to be a clean car state or a ZEB state, which meant our air compliance was tied to California's rules. Under the Clean Air Act, that was allowed through the waiver, and we all learned a lot about that over the last several years when there were challenges to it. So here's a list of a few things. There were so many things that when I was putting this together, I'm like, well, what are kind of the highlights that we could pick out here? The really big one that really tends to move markets is when you get new laws passed, because all of a sudden institutions have obligations and things start to change pretty quickly. And so back in 2020, January of 2020, there was a new law in town. It was really a market-leading law that Governor Murphy signed, and it did an awful lot of things in the state, including setting goals for 330,000 light-duty cars on the roads and registered by 2025, and a number of other things related to infrastructure. It really was the first of its type in the country to essentially architect out a fast public charging network that would cover the entire state of New Jersey. We also saw some really big commitments from the vehicle manufacturers themselves, some brand-new players and some established players. Seems every week, there's another announcement coming out, and that just continues to happen. Big commitments in this space, billions of dollars being invested on the factories to build the cars, the batteries, and everything else that needs to support the market. Consumer interest obviously has increased, and the one thing that does remain is a lack of product in the state, but for different reasons. 2016 and 2017, we didn't have a lot of product in the market, because if you were an OEM, you were mostly sending cars to the states that had a lot of incentives. That just makes sense if you're trying to sell cars. New Jersey didn't have many incentives, therefore, we didn't get a lot of cars. Now, because of COVID and interesting supply chain disruptions, you also have a lack of cars in the state. That is a temporary condition, however, and it is expected to relax probably over the next four to six months. So, but that still continues to be an issue. The big new one, which you're all aware of, is that we've got some significant money from the federal government through the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act, and quite a lot of incentives coming through the state as well, both for the vehicles themselves. Light Duty Fleet offers a subsidy program through the Board of Public Utilities, and the Economic Development Authority is offering truck vouchers, and that program is expanding since it's pil, since it started piloting about seven or eight months ago. Charging infrastructure is going to be supported by state-based incentives through several of the utilities. Two have programs in the market right now, PSENG and Atlantic City Electric, and two more will be approved any day now for JCPN-L Rockland. And DEP also offers incentives through its plug, I actually forgot the name, but DEP offers surcharging infrastructure as well. And then the last thing I just wanted to bring everyone's attention to was, in December this year, on the 20th, to be exact, we adopted the Advanced Clean Truck Rules from California, the first East Coast state to do so, and we were followed, followed pretty quickly thereafter by New York. So, and I think one more state, Rhode Island. And we join, obviously, California, Oregon, and Washington as well. That mandates a percentage of cleaner trucks and buses in the state year over year and starts with compliance year 2026. So could we move to the next slide, please? We have, and this is an issue that remains in the state, is lagging data. So you'll notice the chart on the right is showing you data through the end of 2019. I'd like to really show you the end of 2020, but we don't have that data yet, which is an issue. But we are trying to work on putting in place better reporting and data sharing so we can get real-time information on this market. But you will see on that slide that over the years, what has happened is not only has the number of vehicles registrations grown in the state, but the percentage of battery-electric vehicles to plug-in battery-electric vehicles, the latter represented in green there and the former in blue, has grown. In 2016, my colleagues and I thought the plug-in electric hybrid vehicles would play a larger role in the market and the transition. Guess what? The battery technology has advanced so rapidly and so quickly that most OEMs are skipping over that entirely and moving right to the BEV, because the batteries are better and the range is better. And so you're just going to see a lot more offerings of pure battery-electric. The slide on the left just shows you where the electric vehicles today live, meaning where they're registered, where they sleep at night. And you can see in your catchment area, you've got quite a lot of market activity. And so obviously, this is only going to grow. I would expect the dark green to get dark greener. In other words, I expect these trends to continue. There's a lot of good reasons why these, these clusters exist, and adoption breeds adoption. I've had a electric hybrid, I'm sorry, I've had a battery-electric vehicle, a Chevy Bolt, for five years now, and over those last several years, four or five people in my neighborhood have also gotten electric vehicles, because they've asked me about them, and I've been able to talk to them about it, not obviously just because I say it's a great idea, but you can clearly see, once your neighbor gets one, you know, neighborhoods start to pick up on this. So if you could move to the next slide, please? So here's a little bit of what is coming. This is a pretty exciting year, 2022. I think finally, it is going to be the year we've been waiting for, in that we are going to have lots and lots of variety and choices, that the pictures on the right really is, I couldn't fit everything. It is just a smattering of stuff that's coming into the market in 2022. And if you notice, there are some names you recognize, and there are some names you don't recognize, because they're brand-new. And so it's going to be a really kind of cool year to see all that product coming in. In fact, we're planning to do an electric car show, hopefully in the fall of this year, to be able to showcase a lot of these different, really cool cars and trucks. On the left, we wanted to show you a little bit of the public charging infrastructure and the maps that exist. So because we got a law passed, there are now sort of legally compliant charging stations per the mandates in that law. And so this represents what you can see is already compliant and compliant. And then you can also see in the state that there are large, what we would call charging deserts. A lot of that is not in your territory, it's the southern portion of the state where you can see, in all of the red, there's just no charging available. That will be changing, but ultimately, what we want to see happen, per the law, by the way, is that on the 42 roads that we travel, 80% of all of our vehicle miles, 42 roads, that we travel, 80% of all of our vehicle miles, we want to see public, fast chargers every 25 to 30 miles. When I say "fast," what I mean by "fast" is that you should be able to get 80% charge in about 20 minutes, more or less. Once you go beyond 80%, and by the way, it's the same way with the way your cellphone works, once you get over 80%, charge happens a lot more slowly to protect the battery, but if you've got cars that are going 300 miles to a charge, you've got more than enough juice to get to your final destination or your next charging destination. So that's a little bit of what is coming. In terms of the cars and the infrastructure that are going to make a really big deal, we also have dollars coming in the form of the public infrastructure law, and some really notable opportunities for counties in that as well. And then the last point is really some brand-new business models happening that are really made possible because of this change in technology. And that's a very exciting opportunity when it comes to solving what really is a problem and an impediment for people to live their lives and be able to eat, to have easy, affordable access to work, jobs, and recreation. If you don't have, and you've heard this before, if you live in certain places in this state and you don't have a car, you are effectively stranded, because there are just so many places public transportation does not go. There are some really interesting models that are coming forward because of this change to electric fuel. So last slide, before we entertain any questions. So given the audience here today, I kind of wanted to leave you with a little bit of a challenge. I think some of you who I know and I've spoken with have started this adventure of thinking and planning, but I think as folks, especially for the county executives, I think there's a lot of work to prepare for this transition. The first thing y'all should be doing, if you haven't done it already, is a vehicle inventory to get a good, solid understanding of what you've got and what's ready to turn over, so you can see what your options are. The other thing is, you want to start thinking about charging infrastructure to support vehicles, the ones you could acquire in the near term and the ones you can acquire in the longer term. And you want to be very, very mindful of what we call duty cycles, meaning how is the car used? How many miles a day does it go? What are the times it has to be in operations? Because all of these questions get to the plan for charging infrastructure. You can, there's many, many different ways to charge a vehicle. Some can be high-power, much more costly, some can be low-power, some can use a wall outlet. It really depends on the job of the vehicle. Also, I think there's some really, as I was alluding to before, fascinating business models coming forward, and there's some interesting and new efficiencies for all of you, offering charging as a service, depot models, and essentially, I want you to think about this, if you've got a fleet of vehicles parked in a location, then when those vehicles are not on the road and they're connected to the distribution system at night and charging, you effectively have a virtual power plant when the electricity is able to flow both ways, both from the grid to the vehicles and the vehicles to the grid. And those are markets, some of which exist today, some of which we want to help create, that can provide additional revenue for public entities as well. And the cars that are coming into the market more and more are going to have that vehicle-to-grid capability enabled. So that's a really interesting thing to look at. And last, there's an interesting question about how the county can function and help its member municipalities. There may be some efficiencies here to how the county can, can aid its, its, its member municipalities, which should be explored as well. The reason that you should be thinking about all of this pretty carefully is that you should be ready to be able to jump on any incentives that come into the market, both from the state and from the federal government. And all of the things that I've listed here will really enable you to be prepared, to be able to take full advantage of being able to leverage some really attractive incentives that we expect in the market. So I probably talked long enough, I'm going to stop there and see if there's any questions that you would like me to attempt to answer. Thank you.
Pamela, this is Ted from the NJTPA. We did have some questions in the chat box, actually more, more comments. Anthony Borelli spoke, you know, support in general for EVs as being a good thing, but had some questions about the infrastructure required to support them, and then we had a separate question on the weight of batteries with respect to making vehicles heavier, potentially, potentially more dangerous in a crash. I don't know if you want to address those, or...
Yeah, happy to. Well, let me talk a little bit about the weight first of the batteries. It is absolutely true that electric vehicles and the batteries that make them work, the batteries themselves are heavy. There are some really interesting innovations in materials. I'll, I'll name one company, not invested in the company or anything like that, it's just an example. It's called Arrival. And they're, they've got a lot of IP around the materials themselves, they're in the business of doing buses, municipal buses, school buses, vans, things like this. And there is an issue with weight on the roads, or I should say, there's a potential issues with weight on the roads. So the designers of electric vehicles are being very mindful to design cars to be lighter. Clearly, they have all of the safety requirements to meet, but to be lighter in lieu of the fact that they've got more weight in the battery. Now, the design of electric vehicles frees up a lot of space in the vehicles, and also you don't have all the, you know, 7,000 moving parts related to the internal combustion engine. So there's trade-offs there in design, but you've been, you've been able to see electric cars in the market that are compliant with the safety regulations, and that has to do with total weight. And you're also starting to see the evolution of the materials themselves that are much lighter and much stronger, that are making up for the weight of a battery. So that's one, one solution from vehicle designers. And by the way, the other, the other important thing to note, too, is people get in their heads that batteries just have to get bigger, meaning range. And I would challenge that idea, because really what it, it comes down to is availability of easily accessible, fast public charging, and there's basic biology, right? Most of us can't drive 300 miles without stopping for a bathroom, or food, or, you know. That's just basic biology, right? So when you're designing these vehicles, and trucks in particular, you know, I'll give you an example, there's drayage trucks, which are the large Class 8 trucks that go back and forth from the port every single day. There's a whole market of those trucks that only go 80 miles every day, which means you don't need a 300 to 400-mile range battery in those trucks. You can get away with a battery that's 150 miles to the charge, because that's more than enough juice for them to accomplish the work in a day. That's what's known as that, that duty cycle. So there's a lot of moving parts to consider when you're thinking about weight and battery, but those things are addressable and being solved in the market.
Come on, I'm on my coffee call anyway.
There is a, there is a comment in here about e-bikes, and I think e-bikes are, I happen to own an e-bike, and I think e-bikes are a fantastic way to get and move people around in more urban areas. And there's a question, you know, it's been talked about in Trenton a little bit about subsidies. So again, the state has to decide, this is a, this is a kind of a high-level question, which is, if there's limited state incentive to go out into the market, where should priorities be? I would offer, while I think electric bikes are fantastic, I would offer that the principle around subsidies needs to be led first by what is the best dollar spent for tiny carbon reduced? And so we haven't done that as a state, we've designed incentives and programs around that organizing principle, but I absolutely agree that e-bikes are a great transportation alternative, and they should be considered and marketed and pushed, again, if you've got, you know, the safe streets and infrastructure to support them. I live in a place where I can actually bike to work some days, and I do that, I'm, you know, four miles from my office, which I'm very lucky for, but I don't exactly have the most safe way to get from point A to point B. So there is work that needs to be done there. And then there's also business models that are making electric bikes much more feasible without subsidies today.
Perhaps this is the time we can open up and see if there's anybody else that would like to speak with Pam and ask questions. Would be, Ted, do you want to see if there's anybody on the phone, or Melissa?
Yeah, I guess this would be the time, if any board members or subregional staff wants to ask a question of Pamela, this would be the time to do it. I don't see any... I don't see anything else, any specific question in the chat at this time.
I see, there's one question that I see that I should address that it has to do with the idea of curbside charging that I want to touch on because it gets to an important point, which is there's a lot of areas in your jurisdiction where folks do not have access to what I'm going to call routine charging. What I mean when I say routine charging is long-dwell times, typically overnight, right? I live in Lawrenceville, New Jersey, down here in Mercer County. I have a garage. I can easily charge my car in my garage. But there are folks that live in places like Hoboken, right, where you don't have access to routine charging, and it's complex. It's not impossible to get curbside charging in, but it's complex. And it's also, you know, people don't have dedicated spaces. So there's a number of considerations. One of the ways that we want to be able to cover routine charging for folks that live in high-density housing or configurations like Hoboken is, again, to make the proliferation of high-speed public charging ubiquitous throughout the state so that for some people, the way they will get most of the charge they need is to go sort of like a gas station fill-up today. That might be at a supermarket, that could be at a charging depot, where they plug in and in 10 or 15 minutes, they're at more or less full charge, or they could do that while they're grocery shopping. That, there's another way too, which is workplace charging, where people go to work on campuses or other locations where they're going to be there for four to six hours, they could plug in all day. And remember, a really important statistic, which many of you are probably aware of, average miles driven in this state pre-pandemic were 40 miles a day. That's more than enough time to fill a car, and most of us do not drive around with a full tank of gas in any case.
Well, we'll wait to see if there's anybody on the telephone that'd like to ask you a question. You had referred to OEM before, which I see as Office of Emergency Management, but I think you're using, and then I think the other was BEV, so I wanted to know what they mean.
I apologize, I use these terms sometimes. So you're right, there is an OEM, which is the Office of Emergency Management. OEM is also a term we use, original equipment manufacturer. And when I say that, what I mean is the folks in the company that manufacture the cars. That's from the dealerships and sell the cars, but the OEMs or original equipment manufacturers make the cars. Then you have companies like Tesla, which broke that mold, and they do both, right? They manufacture the cars, they also sell the cars, and they get how to get a special exemption in New Jersey to be able to do that. In fact, any original equipment manufacturer or manufacturer that wants to sell direct to the public has to do that state-by-state, challenging the existing dealership laws. BEV versus PHEV. BEV stands for Battery Electric Vehicle, which means there is no fossil fuel in that vehicle, it is driven solely by a battery. That is the car I have, the Chevy Bolt. The Teslas are all BEVs. But you do have like the RAV4, which is hybrid. It runs both on fossil and battery. Distinct from the Prius, many people remember the introduction of the Prius in the early 2000s, which was a battery fossil vehicle, but you could not charge it. The way that that battery got charged was through braking in the car. But plug-in hybrid electric vehicles, PHEV, are cars like the electric RAV4, where you can plug them in every day and you might get 40 or 50 miles on that charge before it reverts to fossil. You run out of battery and then it moves to fossil. So PHEVs and BEVs are distinct technologies. And the point I was making before was five or six years ago, most of us that were interested in this market predicted that the PHEV, the plug-in hybrid vehicle, would play a much more significant role in the market. And we're wrong. The manufacturers, because of advancements in battery technology, have just skipped over that, and many of them are offering, they're not offering hybrids at all, they're offering pure battery electric vehicles.
Thank you.
Doug Greenfeld from Middlesex County asked if you could provide an example of good EV readiness, a plan that was adopted by either a municipal or the county government?
Yeah, so I know that Somerset County, and I think I saw somebody on from Somerset County, has really been, like as a county goes, I'm going to say, I've been, you know, exposed to a lot of their work, and I think they've been a really nice example of being pretty aggressive in how they are thinking about electrifying both their vehicles and also the sort of role and relationship Somerset has, the county has, to their member municipalities. So I would highlight them, I think they're a good example for you all.
This is Sarah Stewie, Somerset County Commissioner. We appreciate that, and we have made a great effort to make sure that we work with our Department of Policy Planning and Economics with Walter Lane here over in Somerset County, and making sure that whether it's from our public work side or anything in between with transportation, that we do have a commitment to electric vehicles.
Same, Somerset. I'll also call out a municipality, which is Jersey City. So Jersey City has done quite a bit also in terms of their planning and adoption and even piloting some interesting business models in Jersey City, and so want to shout out to them as well as a good municipal example.
I don't see any additional questions in the chat box, a few statements that I think you've pretty much covered. I don't know if there are any further questions.
If I can, I just want to leave you with this to sort of entice you all to be thinking about this carefully. As an example, I like to use to get folks excited about these benefits. So the fossil fuel savings on operating an electric vehicle are significant. And for public entities, that's one of the things that should be making you really curious about adoption. As an example, I have about 90,000 miles on my electric vehicle. And 90% of those miles were fueled out of my home. And I took advantage of some interesting offers in the market that are also sort of equivalent to time-of-use tariffs, which are being discussed in the state. And I'm sharing this example to illustrate what is possible. So electric usage and the cost of delivering electricity is driven by power and driven by peak, peak use. And so if you're able to charge electric vehicles at night, the cost of electricity is much, much less expensive. My experience driving around 90,000 miles, 90% of those charged out of my house at night under an interesting offer, I would have paid, if I was fueling those miles with fossil electricity, I would have paid $10,000. 90,000 miles, $10,000. Because I fueled those, 90% of those primarily out of my home at a very good time of the 24-hour cycle, my equivalent cost was not $10,000, folks, it was $800. And the reason I want to illustrate that is because you all should, your head should snap back when you understand what that delta could possibly be and the savings that would accrue to all of you. So I hope that leaves you with some sort of, here's why I should be interested in this if I haven't looked at this already.
Pamela, I, thank you. Thank you so much for all you've shared with us today. And it doesn't sound like anybody else has any more questions, but I look forward to looking at your slideshow again and discussing this deeper with the county as well.
Thank you so much. With you all.
Very, very interesting. I share a garage somewhere in another state, and my, our neighbor had an electric vehicle. So I got to really watch and learn more about her through her. Interestingly, she's changed vehicles, but I haven't caught up with her, ask why. She doesn't have an electric vehicle right now, and I'm real curious to ask her why. But I have two electric bikes firstly for myself. I love them. I think they, they're amazing, and I can see in the foreseeable future, electric cars being something to consider in our family. Thank you for your time today, much appreciate it, and we wish you a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Best to you as well, everyone stay healthy.
Thank you. Now we're going to move on to our committee reports, and we'll start with Commissioner John Bartlett, Chair of the Project Prioritization Committee. Good morning, John.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm pleased to report on the activities of the Project Prioritization Committee. At the December joint meeting, the committee considered three action items, two of which are on today's agenda. First, the committee approved a minor amendment to the current Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP, to add federal funds to the Portal North Bridge project as requested by New Jersey Transit. The project has received $77.8 million in federal funding through the American Rescue Plan Act. This additional funding will support design, engineering, construction, and other project elements. As you know, the NJTPA has long made construction of the new portal bridge a top priority, as outlined most recently in Plan 2050. This is listed as action item number one on today's agenda. Next, the committee approved a minor amendment to the current tip to add the ferry slip reconstruction at the Central Railroad Terminal State Historic Site Phase 1, as requested by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. However, subsequent to the meeting, we were informed that this action is still under review by the Federal Transit Administration. As a result, this item is being tabled for now and is expected to be taken up at a future board meeting. The third item considered by the committee was approval of the financial plan update for the replacement of Bridge S32 on County Road 520, Rumson Road, over the Shrewsbury River. Financial plans are required for major projects with total costs from $100 million to $500 million in federal funding. This financial plan update reflects an increase of $16 million, which is mainly due to updated construction-related costs. The committee approved the financial plan update, and no further action is needed. At the meeting, staff also informed the committee that updates to the NOTIS Project Tracking System, that's N-O-T-I-S, Project Tracking System, and revisions to the TIP Project Prioritization Criteria will be included in the 2023 Unified Planning Work Program. This concludes the Project Prioritization Committee report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Bartlett. So we have, in the interest of simplifying our board action for the online meeting, we've asked some of the board members to be prepared to offer a motion and a second. So with this, we're going to start with a minor amendment to the FY 2022 to 2025 tip, the Transportation Improvement Program, to add federal funds to the Portal North Bridge as requested by NJ Transit. May I have a motion?
This is Jeremy Clangial, NJ Transit.
Thank you, Jeremy. And may I have a second motion?
Ocean County will second.
Thank you. Any comments from the board members? Carrie, Nun, Beverly, may we have a roll call?
Yes. Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterden?
I have to abstain.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Monmouth?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Ocean?
Yes.
Passaic?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yes.
Sussex?
Yes.
Union?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Office?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
NJ Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
The motion is carried.
Thank you, Beverly. Now I'll call on Commissioner John Kelly, who is Chair of the Freight and Initiative Committee, to give his report. So good morning, Commissioner Kelly.
Morning, Chair, and thank you for all your service. I am pleased to report the activities of the Planning and Economic Development Committee. At the joint committee meeting in December, the committee heard a presentation on the Essex-Hudson Greenway Project. The project will create a nine-mile greenway across eight communities from Montclair to Jersey City. Denise Lee of the Open States Initiative, a regional land trust and conservation organization, briefed the committee on the initial phase of the project, which involves the state purchasing a currently unused rail line from Norfolk Southern, as well as development of visual materials such as renderings and maps, designed for engaging the public in the vision for the greenway. Ms. Lee said partners in the effort include NJ Transit, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, the Governor's Office, the New Jersey Bike and Walk Coalition, and the 9/11 National Memorial Trail. The project represents more than just added recreational opportunities. As was pointed out during the meeting, it will allow a new bike commuting option in the densest part of our region. It is very much in keeping with the goals for encouraging active transportation in NJTPA's recently approved Plan 2015. At the joint meeting, staff also provided updates on the development of the 2023 Unified Planning Work Program, which Mary spoke about earlier. That concludes the Planning and Economic Development Committee report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Now I'll call on Commissioner Charles Kenny, Chair of the Freight and Initiative Committee, to give a committee report. Good morning, Commissioner Ray Kenny.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and congratulations on your two years. Your overseeing the continuity of operations here at the NJTPA during this two years is a credit to your leadership, so congratulations.
Thank you.
And now for my Freight Initiatives Committee report, I am pleased to report on the December meeting of the Freight Initiatives Committee, where we heard our third annual New Jersey industrial real estate market update. Our first speaker was Bill Waxman, Vice Chairman of Cushman and Wakefield, who said that after rebounding from the pandemic a year ago, the market for industrial spaces continued to accelerate, much of it driven by the increase in e-commerce. Rents have reached record levels, up to $26 per square foot in the Meadowlands and $40 in New York City. Next, we heard from Jesse Hardy. New Jersey, New York Market Officer Porlogius, who said that with the higher demand vacancy rates are at 2% or less, he noted that in central Jersey, the area around the Turnpike's exit 8A is essentially full. So industrial developers are seeking space to the south and the west and knocking down or converting office buildings and retail space for industrial use. Hold on one second, I just lost my comments. Please bear with me. They are gone, okay? My apologies. Mr. Hardy also noted that multi-story industrial developments are finding success in New York City's boroughs. In terms of addressing labor shortages, Mr. Hardy said his company is working with community workforce programs in Newark and elsewhere to help train residents for jobs in transportation, logistics, and distribution. He also noted that sustainability has become a priority with the He also noted that sustainability has become a priority with the growing number of buildings incorporating rooftop solar panels. Dave Ashenbrand, Vice President, Cold Storage at Bridge Development, said that even as the nation addresses infrastructure needs, the next logistics bottleneck could likely be cold storage facilities, especially around major metropolitan areas like New York and New Jersey. He said many of these facilities have up to two-week waits for space affecting groceries, produce, prepared meals, and other items. Next, Jeff Millenack, a partner at Bridge Industrial, said the accelerated industrial property market forcing developers to look at old industrial legacy sites, many of which are brownfields that require cleanup of heavy contamination, soil stabilization, and other measures. He noted that such sites are often located in depressed communities with high unemployment. Mr. Millenack said, "In these cases, the challenge is in developing credibility with the communities and demonstrating the ability to deliver projects and create jobs." The presentations were followed by a brief panel discussion, and this concludes the Freight Initiative Committee Report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelly. Kenny, I'm sorry. Now we come to the public portion, participation of the meeting. Please request to comment or ask questions in the chat box, or wait until we call for comments from those on their phones. Also, please remember to mute yourselves when you're not speaking. As a reminder, we advise members of the public that we have a three-minute time limit on comments. The time will be displayed on the screen while each person is speaking. Ted, did you see any questions in the chat box? Has anyone in the public signed in today?
Yes, Commissioner. We had one person that signed up in advance, so I'll call on Neil Weisman first, and then we'll go through anyone else.
Terrific. Good morning, Mr. Weisman.
Neil, if you're with us.
You got me now?
Yes, sir. We can hear you.
Yes.
Great. Okay, there's a link to extended remarks in the chat. And again, my name is Neil Weisman of Complete George. Twenty-three cyclists died on New Jersey roads last year. This compares to 18 across New York City, which has significantly higher mode share. This indicates that riding a bike is far more dangerous in New Jersey. And if so, well, what are the contributing factors? This is what I was trying to determine. Are Jersey cyclists more reckless than their New York City counterparts? Does alcohol and drug use play a factor? As prioritized by the New Jersey State Police, this is what they look for. From the 23 crashes, I broke out eight that occurred in North Jersey. And you've got a spreadsheet in the, you know, you've got a spreadsheet for that in the remarks. But preliminary data lists only date, time, and the road. But from just this, we can tell that these were not recreational trips. Seven occurred on a weekday between 11:00 AM and 4:00 PM, and the Saturday trip was along Interstate 78. These cyclists clearly needed to get from point A to point B. From Google Maps, we learned that seven roads had no cycling treatment. The eighth Route 71 in Asbury Park is an unbuffered bike lane that exposes cyclists to doring. We don't know if the collisions occurred mid-block or at intersection. The data omits GPS coordinates. But the absence of bike infrastructure is itself significant. New York City DOT quantifies overall harm reduction of its bike grid at 32%. Along major corridors, 60%. But European cities with extensive bike infrastructure and double-digit mode shares did not see any increase in mortality during the cycling surge during the pandemic. Oslo and Helsinki didn't record a single cyclist or pedestrian fatality in 2020. Other examples of how data collection can enhance safety and promote share. Transport for London did map fresh as one criteria to improve improvements in its extensive bike grid. Bicycle Magazine was able to determine that 25 of 29 cyclist fatalities in New York City involved commercial vehicles. Outside Magazine has undertaken to map and catalog every cyclist fatality in the U.S. starting in 2020. Another way to regard New Jersey's 23 fatalities, to look at a chart showing the fatalities per 10 million cycles in New York City over 18 years, that coincides with the buildout of the city's bike grid. One might conclude that New Jersey is where New York City was 20 years ago. And if that is true, the place enhanced the data collection analysis. Thank
Thank you, Mr. Weisman.
Commissioner, we also had Mr. James Lee, who wanted to make a comment or a question about a project, highway widening project.
Can everyone else go on mute? Because the echoing is crazy. Thanks.
Hello, my name is James Lee. I'm with Safe Streets Jersey City. It's Jersey City. I want to thank first the Chair for her comments on continued pedestrian safety. And I also want to thank the comments on continuing to invest in the Essex Greenway. Recently, we learned that there's going to be a $5 billion expansion of I-87 from Newark through Jersey City. As you all know, both of these communities are some of the densely populated, both in New Jersey and the entire nation. I-87, that was first constructed, was very controversial and divided in communities in the second portion of Newark. A few years later, were the Newark riots. You know, even today, with the pollution from trucks and cars, one in four of Newark's children had suffers from asthma, and one in 10 has been counted. What that Hudson County stat hides is that actually, the vast majority of those asthma cases are in Jersey City itself. This highway widening is... Hello, can you all hear me? I'm a little confused at what's going on.
Yes, we can still hear you.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Okay, I think someone muted. Thank you. So overall, the air quality in Hudson County has received an F from the American Lung Association. Over 17,000 New Jerseyans die per year as a result of air pollution. In 2020, we passed New Jersey's Environmental Justice Law, which means that overburdened communities should not be should not be receiving additional pollution and without mitigation. I think, you know, this this authority here, with the gathering of multiple modalities, can really do a lot of work to provide alternatives to yet another highway widening project. You know, frankly speaking, the lungs of the children in Hudson County and Jersey City and Newark in particular, they are full. They are full of PM-25 particulates. They're full of ozone. And expanding this highway in an era of climate change is irresponsible. I really urge all of the parties here to look at high-capacity improvements to mass transit. I think, obviously, you know, investments in New Jersey Transit and the portal bridge, that's great. Continuing to look at Hudson-Bergen Light Rail, extending it to Newark, better utilizing our freight rail assets. We do have growing freight issues, but you know, the lungs are full, and we need to look at the highest capacity and greenest and cleanest ways of doing so. And last, I want to call out remediating and mitigating the decades of harm caused by pollution from I-78 and the divisions of the community of Newark, Jersey City, Bayonne, and Hoboken. I think barriers and burning I-78 and its approach to the Holland Tunnel would go a long way towards mitigating that harm. I will also leave a full copy of our letter by many members of Safe Streets Jersey City and bike communities in Hudson County. I'll leave a link in the comments in the comments for everyone to reference in its entirety. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who wants to speak, Ted?
I don't see anybody else that has spoken in the chat. I don't know if there's anybody on the phone, but I think that's I think that's it from what I have.
This is Jared Rodriguez. I just want to sort of reiterate what the gentleman just said. And I think my concern is primarily diesel combustion. We had a conversation earlier about EV charging in electric vehicles. I do believe the state needs an accelerated plan to phase out diesel combustion, both in railroads, trucking and freight, and for public transportation. So I think that's within our power. And I think we should have a serious conversation about an accelerated phase out of diesel combustion for air quality improvement and also for climate, reaching our climate goals. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the telephone that wishes to speak? Harry Nun will close the public portion. And that brings us to the nominating committee and election of the Executive Committee of the Board for 2022 to 2023. At the November 8 board meeting, I announced that I would convene a committee to seek out and review nominations for the NJTPA Executive Committee for this next two years. Joining me on the nominating committee was Hudson County Executive Tom DeGees and Commissioner Tom's, or known of Monmouth County. We met last month and determined by unanimous decision that the committee recommends the following slate of offices for the 2022-23 term. That would include Chair, Passaic County Commissioner John Bartlett, First Vice Chair, Ocean County Commissioner John Kelly, Second Vice Chair, Middlesex County Commissioner Charles Kenny, Secretary, Union County Commissioner Betty Jane Kolosky. Are there any of the nominations from the board? Harry Nun, do you accept your nominations? May I have a motion to... Let's make sure we have... Each of the people I called on, Commissioner Bartlett, Commissioner John Kelly, Commissioner Charles Kenny, and Commissioner Betty Jane Kolosky, do you accept your nominations?
Yes.
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 Yes, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the slate of candidates? And remember to use your name.
Monmouth will move.
Thank you, Monmouth.
Seconded. Seconded, Jared Rodriguez, Citizen Rep.
Thank you for the second. Any comments from the board members? Now I'll turn to the general public. Any comment from the members of the public on the nominations or the election? All right, Harry, no comments. Beverly, would you please call the roll?
Bergen?
Yes.
Essex?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Hunterden?
Yes.
Middlesex?
Yes.
Monmouth?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Newark?
Yes.
Somerset?
Yeah.
Union?
Yes, I'm sorry. Sussex says yes.
Thank you. Warren?
Yes.
Governor's Authorities Unit?
Yes.
NJDOT?
Yes.
And New Jersey Transit?
Yes.
Port Authority?
Yes.
Citizens Representative?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Congratulations to all.
Thank you. In accordance with the bylaws, the new chair will appoint the Third Vice Chair. So with that, I want to say congratulations to everyone. And I'll now turn the meeting over to our new chair, Commissioner John Bartlett. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, Kathy. And I wish we were together, not just, not so you could pass me a gavel or anything, but so that I could congratulate you and thank you in person for your extraordinary and also extraordinarily challenging two years. As you mentioned, through the vagaries of our organizing documents, it falls to me in my first act as Chair to appoint the Third Vice Chair on our Executive Committee. And I would like to appoint Warren County Commissioner Jason Sarnoski as the Third Vice Chair. Commissioner Sarnoski, do you accept the nomination?
Yes, Commissioner Bartlett. Thank you for the honor.
Great. Okay, well, I'm honored to begin this term. I'm honored that the Board of Trustees has entrusted me with the position of Chair. I'm eager to continue the great work of the NJTPA. And, you know, as I said, it's quite something to follow in the footsteps of Chairs De Filippo and Estrada, Holt, DeGees, and all of the prior chairs who served NJTPA so well and kept this organization moving forward and our region moving forward when it comes to transit and transit safety. Our challenges are many, but I'm certain that we're up to the task. I look forward to working with all my friends on the board, with the NJTP staff, and with all the residents of our great region to improve transportation, improve our quality of life, and of course, get this organization through the continuing challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic. At our next meeting, I plan to share more about my vision for the agency during my two years as Chair. But for now, it is time to say thank you to our outgoing Chair, Kathy De Filippo. So let's cue the video. Stand by just a second. There we go. David, I'm not getting any audio.
Yeah, I'm not getting any audio either.
Yep, we're... Hang on. Well, we'll fix that.
I'm so sorry. I tested this before the board meeting, and I'm having so many tech issues right now. Let's try one more thing. Hold on. Maybe it got reset when I logged out and logged back in.
Morris County Commissioner Kathy De Filippo served as Chair of the NJTPA Board during a time like no other. Amid the global pandemic, just two months into her chairmanship, the NJTPA shifted to remote work and virtual operations.
I have to tell you, I never got to use my ID. When I was elected Chairwoman of the Board, I was excited. And now I'd be able to wave, go and pass security and come in. But who knew when I came in as the NJTPA Chair that the pandemic would turn our lives upside down. But our board and our staff responded to that challenge.
Under Commissioner De Filippo's leadership, the Board adopted Plan 2050, Transportation, People, Opportunity, in September 2021. This long-range plan was informed by extensive virtual public engagement. The plan prioritizes creating accessible and equitable transportation to address real needs during the next 30 years.
It's really remarkable what the Board and our agency were able to accomplish during such uncertain times. Commissioner De Filippo was with us every step of the way, leading meetings, offering guidance, and participating. leading meetings, offering guidance, and participating in public outreach for our long-range transportation plan and other important work.
I watched the participation level at the public meetings. And I was always enthused by, the numbers kept rising. And if one or two people dropped off, three more people came on. We had really good participation.
Kathy did an amazing job of keeping it light, keeping things moving. But also, you know, it was still a very personable meeting, even though each of us was sitting there in our own space in front of a computer screen. You still had that sense of esprit de corps, or at least she did the absolute best you could do to create that under the difficult circumstances of these last two years.
We're fortunate to have had such a hands-on share during the last two years. Commissioner DeFilippo has always been involved in our projects and programs in Morris County, as well as our larger region-wide initiatives.
Well, Morris Canal is my little thing that I absolutely love. Living in Roxbury Township, we have parts of the canal that we have saved. Morris Canal is something I want to see preserved and treasured.
As Kathy's leadership comes to a close, we've got the biggest infrastructure investment in a generation, if not two generations, coming into New Jersey. And everything that we're going to be able to do because of Plan 2050, because of the groundwork and the continuity that we've had over these last two years, it's going to be a remarkable bunch of years ahead.
I've been honored to represent Morris County on the board since 2014 and to have spent the last two years as the chairwoman serving. And I look forward to continuing this work and as our region recovers from the pandemic.
All right. Wow, great, great job by our staff putting that together. It was a little choppy and a little quiet, at least for me. If you all experienced that as well. I believe the video is going to be posted either on the NJTPA.org or on NJTPA's YouTube channel. So definitely go check it out again in your own time and really appreciate all that Kathy accomplished over these last two years. Kathy, again, we thank you for your dedicated service to the people of our region and for your tireless advocacy for the importance of transportation. As I said, if we were together, I'd get to hand you a plaque. But my understanding is that a plaque is on its way to you, if it hasn't yet arrived, as a token of our appreciation and that the plaque reads in part, "In recognition of her distinguished leadership as NJTPA Chairman 2020 through 2021, Chair DeFilippo oversaw innovative transportation planning and billions of dollars in investments to improve mobility, strengthen the economy, safeguard the environment, and enhance equity in the NJTPA region." So although we're all remote and across this beautiful state, let's take a moment and give Kathy a round of applause. All right. I understand that there are a couple of other board members that would like to say a few words. So I will introduce in order. First, Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Commissioner Bartlett. First, congratulations on being appointed our new chairman. I look forward to working with you in the years ahead. But I just wanted to talk for a minute about Chair DeFilippo. What a job you did, Kathy, in leading us through very difficult times, including your own problems that you had with your health that you took care of very well. But I really appreciated working under you. You are a great leader and you've shown that in the last two years without any calls for reservation. And look forward to working with you. I understand you're staying on NJTPA. That's fantastic because you're a great member. But I just wanted to congratulate you on your service and let you know how much it's been appreciated. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
That's wonderful. Let me pass the baton or whatever you pass for talking to Commissioner Jason Sarnoski, our third vice chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Bartlett. I too want to thank Commissioner DeFilippo. Wartime leaders are always regarded in the highest degree. And Commissioner DeFilippo has certainly been a wartime leader over the last two years, guiding the NJTPA through the COVID crisis and through a lot of challenges. And she's always been an open and responsive person. Even when us in Warren County have experienced our own challenges, has stepped up to the plate to make sure that she guided and led and did not ignore constituents that even may not have been her own and their concerns. And by that, I mean not only New Jersey, but Pennsylvania constituents, so Pennsylvania people. So Chairman, Chairwoman DeFilippo has done a fantastic job. I wish her the best in the future. She knows that anything she needs, she's welcome to call on myself or Warren County. And I also want to congratulate incoming Chair, Commissioner Bartlett, who is in many ways, just like Commissioner DeFilippo. I know I've heard this said in the past, but I'm going to repeat it. This board is a, one of the best boards, partisan boards I'm on because it's so nonpartisan. You know, we continually change leadership from one party to the other and balance our board out continuously and not, and we're not concerned with partisan politics, but the best needs of the transportation infrastructure in our region and, and who we're serving. So I just am happy to serve here. I thank you for your continued faith in my leadership, Commissioner Bartlett. And, and I congratulate Commissioner DeFilippo. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jason. Yes, let's hear now from Commissioner Koloski.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. And I want to give my thanks and congratulations to outgoing Chair DeFilippo. Thank you for the great work you've done in this very challenging period, the last two years. I don't think any of us could have foreseen the kinds of, of things that we would have to face with the pandemic. But you have brought NJTPA through it with flying colors. I also want to mention that I appreciate the work that you've done with the Freight Committee and also in a time when we're seeing expansion of the importance of freight. Everyone's getting things delivered to their homes. NJTPA looks at the big picture for how to deal with, with freight. And you have served well on that committee. So once again, thank you. And I look forward to serving with, continuing to serve with you and with incoming Chairman Bartlett and all of the executive committee. Also, thank you to Executive Director Amin and the staff. Outstanding work by all of you in the face of all that we've had to look towards in the last two years. So thanks very much to all of you.
Very well said, Commissioner. Are there any other board members that would like to chime in with a few words for Kathy? Just go ahead and unmute yourself. Or NJTPA Leadership Executive Staff.
Let me, let me unmute myself. I, again, I just want to say thank you so much to Kathy DeFilippo for, for your leadership throughout these past couple of years. And congratulations to, to the, to the new executive committee. I look forward to working with everyone. And again, I thank you for your leadership on behalf of the rest of the staff.
Here, here. And just so everyone knows, Melissa did share in the chat the link to the YouTube version of the video that we all just got to watch. Anybody else from staff before I ask Kathy to say a few words? All right. Well, Kathy, you're not going anywhere, but this is your moment with your plaque theoretically in hand to say a few words.
Thank you, John. What I want to say is the staff is remarkable. What I observed over the past two years was our staff had to completely turn things around, as we did in all our county offices, to become remote overnight and to continue to do our business to get our funding and get our work done. I can't say enough, John, about the staff that you are going to be working with. They are attentive to our, to the many balls we juggle. And giving, when they need our time, they give us a little chance. They, they allow you to say, okay, I can put some time aside on three different hours during next week. And they manage to make it work. So you really do get to balance all the things that we do with the NJTP as well, with the NJTPA. And really, all of the commissioners have been great to work with. You've all been remarkable on the board of putting in the time for a pre-board meeting and our board meetings. And I just can't say thank you enough to all of the staff and to the board in general. We've, it was a tough two years and, John, you've got a tough two years coming ahead of us with the infrastructure improvements that we're going to be jumping on. So there's a lot of work to be done, especially in the next year. I look forward to rolling up my sleeves and working with all of you. So thank you again, and I look forward to working with you this year.
Thank, thank you very much, Kathy. There's that expression, we stand on the shoulders of giants. And I'm sure you would say it of Angel and Tom and Matt, and those came before you. And I certainly feel the same way. That brings us to the end of the meeting. So the next virtual meeting of the NJTPA Board will be on Monday, March fourteenth, 2022, at 10:30 AM, right here on your favorite channel. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
This is Kathy.
All right, and may I have a second?
Second.
All right, very good. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Right, wonderful. Thank you again, everyone. Happy New Year. Stay safe, and we'll see you on March fourteenth.